I'm going to call our regular meeting of the Fire Commissioners Board on Monday, January 13th, 5:00 p.m. We're going to call it to order. I'd like everyone to stand, please, for an invocation by Chaplain Shilwood.
I'd like to take a few moments of silence in honor of the firefighters across the nation that have lost their life. For the total year is 61 firefighters. I must have, I hit a, I hit an iPad, so. Okay, but we want to have a moment of silence in honor of those and also to just our hearts go out to and our prayers for the Bogas family at this time of loss in their life. Let's pray. Dear God, we come to you tonight and we give honor to the many firemen that over this past year across America have made the supreme sacrifice for others as they try to protect others and help others. I thank you for them. I thank you for their families. Pray that you will bless them and strengthen them. My Lord, even our own family here, the Bogas family, we ask for strength and comfort during their time of loss. And Lord, we ask for protection for the firefighters here in Benita and surrounding areas. Also, Lord, in California, so many firefighters are putting their lives on the line with those fires there. We pray that you will protect them and just bring that fire to an end quickly. We thank you for the privilege of meeting together and for the freedom we enjoy as Americans. It's in Christ's name we pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. If you guys want to have a seat, you're welcome to fill up the chairs. Is there any public comments on the agenda items? All right, we're seeing none. We're going to move forward. I'd like to take a moment. I speak for the board and the district. Please join me in honoring and thanking Commissioner Lohand for being a steward of the district all these years. Let's give him a standing round of applause. Thank you, Commissioner Lohand. All right, I need approval of December 2024 meeting minutes. So move. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of December 2024 financials, December 2024 in current expenditures and HCH payments, acknowledgement of financial report, acknowledgement of wire transfers and transfers between accounts and purchase orders over $10,000. I need a motion, please.
So move.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioners' business. Commissioners? Anything? Okay, I would just like to say, the other day, I had to call, the chief was in a meeting. I had to call Chief Broad. Spur of the moment, last minute, my daughter's teacher asked me at the charter school, hey, can you have a fireman come in, have him bring in an axe and a helmet? I made one phone call. I had a whole, a whole group of firemen, the largest, the largest ladder we had. They had Nicole come. She did, she's really good at what she does. I was so proud and other teachers were so impressed by them. They let the other children were allowed to come out and enjoy. Really made me proud to be part of this organization. So Chief, and Chief, thank you very much for helping out. That was really nice. Thank you. Okay, on to presentations. I'm going to turn it over to the chief.
Thank you, and I'm going to defer to my new EMS chief, Kelly Wilson.
I'm going to defer to Dr. Abo.
This is our medical director, Dr. Benjamin Abo.
Can I just defer it back now? Absolute pleasure to be here, especially for so many wonderful things. As always, it's great to see my family with the fire department and the family of my family and of our people. So, we have the distinct honor of awarding a few Phoenix awards. For those of you that don't understand, based on the story of the Phoenix, the Phoenix award is awarded to the crews that successfully resuscitate somebody that's in cardiac arrest and bring them back. It's not just a matter of bringing pulses back. It's a matter of having meaningful lives afterwards. Medical jargon, we're talking about having good neurologic recovery, as my dad, who's an accountant, would say, as long as they're paying taxes again and all. But it's, it's, it's giving them a second chance at life, and that's what it really comes down to. And all of this is exactly what we train for. We are not paid for what we do. We are paid for what we are prepared to do. And we train, and we train hard so that people have another chance to be able to kiss and hug their loved ones. So it's a wonderful thing with that. So we have four cases here. Yep, and so I'll go through it and I'll keep it basically as short as I can for as long as I can. All right, for the first Phoenix award, for a call that was on June 14th, 2024, Gio Zamora, firefighter Desiree Schultz, firefighter Hornberger, firefighter Castro, firefighter Lees, firefighter Phillips, paramedic Stan Ball, paramedic Joseph Mott, and EMT Julian Haskins.
We're going to go in order then, anyway, three of them.
Okay. All of these cases, by the way, are unique in and of themselves, not just because of who it is and who's affected, but the stories. There's nothing predictable. Patients don't read scripts. They don't read textbooks. You know, they range from people having heart attacks to large clots in their lungs to who knows. And also, when, once we get on scene and we're all doing the magic that we do orchestrating such a complex symphony of care, it's, it's different pretty much every time. It could be that they, you know, get pulses back and then we bring them to the hospital and do procedure, and then they wake up a couple of days later. Sometimes they're induced into hypothermia and kept sedated. Sometimes they're waking up and asking some questions, and sometimes they wake up and cause quite a ruckus. But either way, it all is orchestrating all that complex care. For this next case, is an example of it. This is somebody that actually was one of our own, not down here in Florida, but was a firefighter and police officer up north. And this was a cardiac arrest that went out down around the corner, and we were already out on a call, and among the first there was one of our battalion chiefs. Took a couple of shocks, got him back pulses-wise, and that's when, at the time, Captain Wilson and I got there also. And we climbed in the ambulance and continued on with that care. I think that this is an example to highlight that it's not just getting the pulses back. Again, it's continuing the care and making sure that we're optimizing everything afterwards. And that's really why I think it's important to recognize that, again, the complex orchestration of everything that's going on. And I'm going to bring these, read these names, but first I do also want to recognize that retired chief Tom Chapel is here with us, and I'd love for you to come up and for everyone to meet you again. You can if you want to. No? Okay. So I'm going to call these names up, but like I said, this is, it's a distinct honor for, to be able to reunite everyone. Last time that I had the pleasure of seeing him, I mean, you were swinging, but you definitely didn't have this color and look that he's here. I just, I think it's a wonderful thing. So, and again, if you want to. I'd like to call for this Phoenix award for the call that was on August 6th, 2024, acting battalion chief Ernie Williams, Lieutenant Michael Mendez, firefighter Terry Bonnell, firefighter Matt Warich, myself, chief Kelly Wilson from Lee County EMS, paramedic David Vaie, and EMT Alex Rosenbaum. Do you want to say anything? You don't have to. Okay. For our next Phoenix award, on the call that was on August 30th, 2024, Lieutenant Tom Harrison, firefighter Jordan Sawald, firefighter William Scott, Lee County EMS, paramedic David Vaie, and again, EMT Alex Rosenbaum. And for our final Phoenix award for tonight, for a call that was on September 15th, 2024, battalion chief Caesar Sanchez, lieutenant John Coates, firefighter April Klotz, firefighter Christian Mayfield, paramedic Taravaya, and EMT Brandon Groh. So as I said, all the time, we have more and more Phoenix awards, and it's a wonderful thing. For all of you that were able to make it here tonight and, and accept on behalf of the others, I thank you. And thank you for everything that you've done and everything that you continue to do to give wonderful residents and visitors to Benita Springs a second chance. Thank you, and thank you for being here.
That's absolutely heartwarming, and I'd like to thank the men and women here that just received and everybody on our department. Thank you for being good at what you do. You make a difference. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over now to the chief for years of service recognition.
Thank you, sir. We have quite a few of those to do tonight.
Before, before you guys, I'm sorry, excuse me, before you guys go, because we usually break, and I will, I thought you might want to be here for years of service. I look forward to making 2025 a better year for the men and women of this district, for the administration, working closely with the union, and I just want this to be a better year, go in the right direction. So thank you.
Go ahead, chief. I'm sorry.
That's all right. So we have some five-year, 10-year, and 20-year pins to give out tonight. I'm going to start with the five-year pins. These two firefighters, David Block and Christian Mayfield, both are great firefighters. Both of them have taken classes and strive that they've, they've shown what it's, what it's like to be a firefighter. You know, David Block was one of those kids that grew up in Benita and, you know, lived next door to a couple of our firefighters and strived to be a firefighter. You know, when he became of age and he went to school and decided to do it, he was one of the top guys on our list. So, and then I got Christian Mayfield. You know, Christian applied to us, obviously five years ago, and he was from the East Coast, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to lie to you, I'm not going to sugarcoat it. We had a little bit of, we've always had a little reservation from hiring from the other coast because, you know, they come over here, they get trained, they run calls, they get some experience, and they go back to where their home, home was, is on the East Coast. And it happened a few times as I was coming up through the ranks with, you know, different personnel and stuff. But you know what? Christian made that commitment to come over here and stay over here. He was two-thirds or three-quarters away through paramedic school at the time, and, you know, took the job seriously, took the department seriously, and decided to, you know, quit paramedic school and come and work for us. And, you know, five years later, he's still here with us. He's moved over here. He's, you know, taken a real liking and, you know, to the Benita Springs Fire Department, and we love both of them for, for staying and being part of our family. So congratulations to both of them. Next one is our 10-year award, 10-year pin, and it goes to, I'm not going to do it. Beverly Jervi, Jervasi.
Closing up?
Beverly G., Bev G. as her email goes, you know. I don't know if a lot of people know this about Bev. First of all, she keeps me in line every once in a while, especially when it comes to the finances. The second part of it is Bev, Bev started here as a temp. We hired her when Tony left and Lisa was doing stuff and Iris was here, so we needed some extra help in the finance department, so Bev came as a temp. And oddly enough, she liked it here and could get along with Lisa and me and the administrative staff, so we decided to keep her and offer her a job, and now look where she is. She's now the head of our finance. She's our finance director, progressed up through the ranks, and is doing a great job of what she does. And she, you know, she keeps this district running, keeps the bills paid, making sure we're not in collection and we're not, you know, I've known some organizations out there that are on the slow to pay, and, you know, they've got to do things differently, the way they pay out stuff. So Beverly keeps us in line, and congratulations. Just trying to decide what order we're going to go in, so. The next one's going to be a little rough with everything that's going on. Jason may have to do it. No, I'll push through. No, I got it. The next one is a 20-year pin for firefighter Terry Bonnell. Terry, Terry's went through a lot. Terry started out here as a volunteer, and some things happened. He didn't get hired, and he's, you know, went a different way and went and worked at Comcast and, and persevered. And then 20 years ago, Terry decided to, you know, try it again, put himself back, went through, his firefighter certificate lapsed. He had to go up and challenge the state test. He had to go through EMT school again, and now he's a paramedic. And he's, he's got that dedication that, and he should be retiring right now with the 25 years, 28 years, but he's retiring with 20 years of service. Terry's one of those guys that's always there. You ask him for something, he gives it to you. And not, not only to me, but to everybody here. You know, he's that guy that is always there and always helping. You know, over this weekend, it's been rough for all of us, and Terry's been that rock. He's been there doing stuff, helping the family, helping me, helping his wife and my, 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 my wife and Tim and Jamie's wife. And he's that constant rock that, that all of us need in our life. So, you know, Terry's got a couple more years left here, and, you know, I'm going to hate to see him go, but congratulations on 20 years, Terry. Next one is for Mike Mendez. Mike, Mike started here 20 years ago. Mike was on my shift towards the end of my career as a, as a lieutenant and acting battalion chief. Mike was a go-to guy, is a go-to guy. I'm sorry, not was. It's not like he's leaving. Mike, Mike is a go-to guy. You know, when Mike was a lieutenant, when he got to become a lieutenant, he, he was doing a great job. He always does a great job. Then when it was time for him to be an acting battalion chief, you know, I went to him and said, hey, Mike, you're going to do this. We need, we need some help. We need you up there. We need to, you know, learn the ropes. A little bit, Mike kind of stammered and stuttered and didn't know for sure if that's what he wanted, but, you know, he stepped up to the plate, and he's one of those acting battalion chiefs that you don't have to listen to on the radio. You don't have to listen to if he's doing the right thing. He's always there. He runs a tight ship at Station Two with, with his crew, and that's the way he runs his shift, you know. And Mike's always there to help out, you know. Even going on this weekend, there's some stuff I asked Mike to do personally for, for the family, and he's stepping up to the plate. So, you know, Mike's one of those guys, and his daughter's going to come up and present this pin to him. So, Mike, congratulations to 20 years. Does anyone, well, I'll give it to him. So the last one, even though he's not here, I'll just say a few words about Alan, and I'll give it to him. He should be on duty in the next couple of days. Again, Alan was one of those young kids. He actually grew up across the street from one of our firefighters that has, since retired, Mark Sterns. He grew up across the street from him, and, you know, seeing what Mark was doing. And Mark's father was a, was the chief or a training chief at the city of Naples. So Mark's dad was a, a training chief, and then Mark became a firefighter, and, you know, Alan seen him in the same neighborhood and, you know, said, I want to do that someday. And Alan, again, went to school, got hired here, and been a great lieutenant. We're looking forward to him to stepping up to the plate and becoming an acting battalion chief. So Alan, it's a route for our 20 years. And now, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Chief Andy Schmidt about the extrication team. For those of you guys on, never mind, I'll let him, I'm not stealing his stuff. No, I just want to make sure everybody knows, it's a presentation. We're very proud of our extrication team. They were one of 36 teams that were invited to go to the world championships, and I'll let, I'll turn it over to him. So we're very proud of them.
Last but not least, in the presentation.
You need me to get out of the way?
No, you're fine. I'll let you go. We're going to start that.
I'm just trying to dim the light so it doesn't.
So for those of you that don't, don't know me, I'm Andrew Schmidt. I'm deputy chief of fire and special operations. I'm up here tonight to recognize Benita XT, which is Benita's Extrication Team, who just performed over in the Azores in November, competed against 35 other teams. They placed 12th overall in the world. So this is. So this is a competition, like I said, of the world. So this is everybody around the world. Not everybody gets to go to this. You have to qualify to be able to get to go to this. And they qualified in Atlanta back in May. They placed top three, and they had to be sponsored by Navra, which is the North American Vehicle Rescue Association, where they were nominated, they had to be approved, and then they did get approved and got in. So it's placed 12th overall is amazing, first of all. Just to be able to compete in this is amazing, considering where we started. So we started this back in 2016. A group of us decided to go to Clearwater and take a class on how to form an extrication team. We had a great time, good bonding experience. We saw kind of how it's supposed to be, and it took us a while to get there. There's members here that competed, but there's also some other members here that have been on the team that are not on it anymore, but continue to train and bring the knowledge to our department. One of the biggest things I could say from this whole extrication team is, and me being part of it as well, is the training you get in leadership, your tool time, just the amount of hours that you put in, it pays dividends for the citizens and the people that pass through Benita. And I will proudly say, anybody that passes through Benita and gets in a vehicle accident, God forbid, they're in good hands. And it's because of these guys coming back and training their guys. It's, it's brought a whole new level. We use live patients, and as Dr. Abo can attest, we are more focused on patient care than ever before when it comes to extrication. So I can give you two examples. In the last week and a half, where we had one vehicle extrication with a car on its side. They had to do a roof lap with a 245-pound patient in there. And they, from getting on scene to getting that patient out, it was 17 minutes, which is incredible. Second one would be another vehicle accident on 75, and patient was stuck inside in the cables. uh, cables. They did a full side out, they did patient care, they got an IV, they got medications onboard for pain and had it, had that patient out in less than 19 minutes. And that's, 19 minutes comes from when they got on scene, not even to getting tools on the car. So I can challenge anybody else in Lee County to do that and I'm pretty sure that we would, we would be the best. So, very proud of these guys. So one of the members, Sebastian Castro, made a video for us. It's a little four-and-a-half-minute video. Um, Chapman started playing it a little early, but, uh, we'll go ahead and watch it now. I don't know if you guys wanna come up, the commissioners wanna come around to see it, or if you can see it from where you're at. It's a li- it's a little, uh, Benita XT hype video.
One more shot.
What's that?
That's the force that's born, one more time. In your pursuit of perfection, you want to strip away from your successes. And the true art lies in your success. You cure all curiosities of their wondering minds, of their lost desires and their passions. It's too professional, I'm tired. I already told you, your physical traits will not define your heartbreak.
Thank you, my wife. What's your birthday?
I really love you, Jordan.
Good.
All right, so, so, every those that were us, EMS, um, everything was stable. We're from Spring, Florida.
It's the first time in the world challenge?
Yes, it's our first time competing in the world rescue challenge and our first time being in, uh, the A-.
So, those guys performed well, they represented well. Um, I just, I can't say enough about them. So, and a lot of these members throughout the years have, you'll see, being promoted to lieutenant, a lot of them are on the acting list, some of them have already been promoted. Um, so a lot of the future leaders in this department. So, great guys. Uh, have two things left to say. I'd say I'd be remiss if I didn't say something about the family members. Uh, these guys put in hours and hours. They bring their children in during practice. This is all on their own time. So, uh, the family obviously sacrifices as well and we appreciate it. So, thank you. And last is gonna be the sponsors and fundraising. So this, this is put in the budget. There is a small amount of money put in the budget for this team to compete. Uh, this going to the worlds was, was a pretty pricey, uh, deal. So they did a lot of fundraising and they did get sponsors as well. So a lot of this is on their own and did that on their own time. And if you haven't got your calendar yet, uh, calendars are available, you know, and they are working. I don't know if you saw some of the, uh, the gear and you saw some of the names on the back. You had a couple nicknames, Dirty Toes and Seabass and other stuff on there. Uh, that has done well for their social media presence. So if you wanna follow them on social media, they're trying to get more followers so they can get more sponsors. Uh, so follow Benita XT. But, uh, I just wanna name them. Fire Dex was one of the biggest contributors, thousands of dollars worth of the gear you saw them wearing there, boots, gloves. Um, they, eight, eight guys, they fully fitted. And we can't say enough and thank you enough to those guys. Uh, Safe Style Equipment, eye protection, heatwave sunglasses, LA Police Gear, team uniforms, pants and job shirts, tactical gear. They gave socks. Turtle Plastics donated a thousand dollars. Harbor Freight, $200 gift card for tools. GoFundMe, they raised $5,000. Uh, I'm not sure the total on, on the calendars, but it's, it's, it's still going up. Um, and last but not least, uh, GNC Towing from here in Benita Springs. Uh, we were having a hard time, which we always have a hard time, getting cars for them to practice with, for the whole department, not just them. Uh, it's always a challenge. Uh, GNC came through last minute with a couple cars that I can't say thank you enough for dropping them off. Um, so if you need any towing needs in Benita, make sure you go to GNC, check them out. Um, but right now, I think we have some pins that the chief will present to the guys. So we have pins to put on their class days, kinda like our USAR pins. Uh, it's well-deserving for all the members of the team. So.
If you wanna call them out, I'll hand them.
Let's go with DIC, Phil Kinsey. We'll go with our medic, Jordan Green. And we're gonna have Tex, Joe Sanderson. Sebastian Castro. Dylan Hood. Jay Pente. Caleb Sparks. And if he's back, Fishamayco.
That was, that's awesome. Another feather in the proud cap. Thank you, guys. You did a fantastic job. Before, yes, sir?
Dr. Abel would like to say.
Yes.
And I gotta say, thank you commissioners for supporting them. We appreciate it.
So those of you that know me, know that, uh, I kinda gallivant around the globe, uh, a bit and stuff, and especially being able to provide medical care, treat the patients where they lie is very important to me. So I'm incredibly, incredibly proud of, of everybody for it. Um, when you're getting phone calls from Taiwan, EMS from the French firefighters, I also got a call from Spain saying, "Hey, your Benita's here," there's nothing that makes you more proud. Um, then you get follow-up phone calls and selfies and pictures saying, "Not only are they here, but they're really kicking some rear." It's something to be really proud of. And as Chief Schmidt said, this isn't just about going through the motions of extrication and treating patients and kinda competing. And 12th place, this is out of hundreds that tried to even get the chance to compete. It's incredible. But it's also about leadership and team building. And everyone has a very important role. We all are, you know, different parts of the puzzle. But without having the commissioner's support, chief duet's support, and especially Chief, uh, Schmidt's support and leadership, um, and them being able to emulate the leadership that you do every day is incredibly important and shows with how well they did. Again, I am incredibly proud of every single one of you, including Chief Schmidt.
That's, that's awesome. Um, before I cut everybody loose, I'd just like to say this to firefighter Bunnell and to every member of this district. We are a family. I know the chief and the other chiefs administration have reached out. If any of you need anything from this board that we can help in any way, all you have to do is ask. If you need to talk to someone, some of you firefighters, you need to talk, ask. I, I know that the, the administration has talked to you. There's no shame in anything. Anything you need, we will do. Okay? And I, I've said that to the chief. And if you need something from me personally, call me. I'm willing to do whatever you need. Uh, we're gonna take a break so you guys can get out of here. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That was, that's awesome. Another feather in the proud cap. Thank you, guys. You did a fantastic job before.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Ebo would like to say.
Yes.
And I got to say, thank you commissioners for supporting them. We appreciate it.
So, those of you that know me know that I kind of gallivant around the globe a bit and stuff and especially being able to provide medical care, treat the patients where they lie is very important to me. So, I'm incredibly, incredibly proud of, of everybody for it. When you're getting phone calls from Taiwan, EMS from the French firefighters, I also got a call from Spain saying, "Hey, your Benita's here," there's nothing that makes you more proud. Then you get follow-up phone calls and selfies and pictures saying, "Not only are they here, but they're really kicking some rear." It's something to be really proud of. And as Chief Schmidt said, this isn't just about going through the motions of extrication and treating patients and kind of competing. And 12th place, this is out of hundreds that tried to even get the chance to compete. It's incredible. But, it's also about leadership and team building. And everyone has a very important role. We all are, you know, different parts of the puzzle, but without having the commissioner's support, chief duet's support, and especially Chief Schmidt's support and leadership and them being able to emulate the leadership that you do every day is incredibly important and shows with how well they did. Again, I am incredibly proud of every single one of you, including you, Chief Schmidt.
That's, that's awesome. Before I cut everybody loose, I'd just like to say this to firefighter Banelle and to every member of this district, we are a family. I know the chief and the other chiefs administration have reached out. If any of you need anything from this board that we can help in any way, all you have to do is ask. If you need to talk to someone, some of you firefighters, you need to talk, ask. I, I know that the administration has talked to you. There's no shame in anything. Anything you need, we will do. Okay? And I've said that to the chief and if you need something from me personally, call me. I'm willing to do whatever you need. We're going to take a break so you guys can get out of here. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That was, that's awesome. Another feather in the proud cap. Thank you, guys. You did a fantastic job before.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Ebo would like to say.
Yes. And I got to say, thank you commissioners for supporting them. We appreciate it.
So, those of you that know me know that I kind of gallivant around the globe a bit and stuff and especially being able to provide medical care, treat the patients where they lie is very important to me. So, I'm incredibly, incredibly proud of, of everybody for it. When you're getting phone calls from Taiwan, EMS from the French firefighters, I also got a call from Spain saying, "Hey, your Benita's here," there's nothing that makes you more proud. Then you get follow-up phone calls and selfies and pictures saying, "Not only are they here, but they're really kicking some rear." It's something to be really proud of. And as Chief Schmidt said, this isn't just about going through the motions of extrication and treating patients and kind of competing. And 12th place, this is out of hundreds that tried to even get the chance to compete. It's incredible. But, it's also about leadership and team building. And everyone has a very important role. We all are, you know, different parts of the puzzle, but without having the commissioner's support, chief duet's support, and especially Chief Schmidt's support and leadership and them being able to emulate the leadership that you do every day is incredibly important and shows with how well they did. Again, I am incredibly proud of every single one of you, including you, Chief Schmidt.
That's, that's awesome. Before I cut everybody loose, I'd just like to say this to firefighter Banelle and to every member of this district, we are a family. I know the chief and the other chiefs administration have reached out. If any of you need anything from this board that we can help in any way, all you have to do is ask. If you need to talk to someone, some of you firefighters, you need to talk, ask. I, I know that the administration has talked to you. There's no shame in anything. Anything you need, we will do. Okay? And I've said that to the chief and if you need something from me personally, call me. I'm willing to do whatever you need. We're going to take a break so you guys can get out of here. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That was, that's awesome. Another feather in the proud cap. Thank you, guys. You did a fantastic job before.
Yes, sir.
That's awesome. Before I cut everybody loose, I'd just like to say this to firefighter Banelle and to every member of this district, we are a family. I know the chief and the other chiefs administration have reached out. If any of you need anything from this board that we can help in any way, all you have to do is ask. If you need to talk to someone, some of you firefighters, you need to talk, ask. I, I know that the administration has talked to you. There's no shame in anything. Anything you need, we will do. Okay? And I've said that to the chief and if you need something from me personally, call me. I'm willing to do whatever you need. We're going to take a break so you guys can get out of here. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That was, that's awesome. Another feather in the proud cap. Thank you, guys. You did a fantastic job before.
Yes, sir.
That's awesome. Before I cut everybody loose, I'd just like to say this to firefighter Banelle and to every member of this district, we are a family. I know the chief and the other chiefs administration have reached out. If any of you need anything from this board that we can help in any way, all you have to do is ask. If you need to talk to someone, some of you firefighters, you need to talk, ask. I, I know that the administration has talked to you. There's no shame in anything. Anything you need, we will do. Okay? And I've said that to the chief and if you need something from me personally, call me. I'm willing to do whatever you need. We're going to take a break so you guys can get out of here. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That was, that's awesome. Another feather in the proud cap. Thank you, guys. You did a fantastic job before.
Yes, sir.
That's awesome. Before I cut everybody loose, I'd just like to say this to firefighter Banelle and to every member of this district, we are a family. I know the chief and the other chiefs administration have reached out. If any of you need anything from this board that we can help in any way, all you have to do is ask. If you need to talk to someone, some of you firefighters, you need to talk, ask. I, I know that the administration has talked to you. There's no shame in anything. Anything you need, we will do. Okay? And I've said that to the chief and if you need something from me personally, call me. I'm willing to do whatever you need. We're going to take a break so you guys can get out of here. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That was, that's awesome. Another feather in the proud cap. Thank you, guys. You did a fantastic job before.
Yes, sir.
That's awesome. Before I cut everybody loose, I'd just like to say this to firefighter Banelle and to every member of this district, we are a family. I know the chief and the other chiefs administration have reached out. If any of you need anything from this board that we can help in any way, all you have to do is ask. If you need to talk to someone, some of you firefighters, you need to talk, ask. I, I know that the administration has talked to you. There's no shame in anything. Anything you need, we will do. Okay? And I've said that to the chief and if you need something from me personally, call me. I'm willing to do whatever you need. We're going to take a break so you guys can get out of here. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That was, that's awesome. Another feather in the proud cap. Thank you, guys. You did a fantastic job before.
Yes, sir.
That's awesome. Before I cut everybody loose, I'd just like to say this to firefighter Banelle and to every member of this district, we are a family. I know the chief and the other chiefs administration have reached out. If any of you need anything from this board that we can help in any way, all you have to do is ask. If you need to talk to someone, some of you firefighters, you need to talk, ask. I, I know that the administration has talked to you. There's no shame in anything. Anything you need, we will do. Okay? And I've said that to the chief and if you need something from me personally, call me. I'm willing to do whatever you need. We're going to take a break so you guys can get out of here. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That was, that's awesome. Another feather in the proud cap. Thank you, guys. You did a fantastic job before.
Yes, sir.
That's awesome. Before I cut everybody loose, I'd just like to say this to firefighter Banelle and to every member of this district, we are a family. I know the chief and the other chiefs administration have reached out. If any of you need anything from this board that we can help in any way, all you have to do is ask. If you need to talk to someone, some of you firefighters, you need to talk, ask. I, I know that the administration has talked to you. There's no shame in anything. Anything you need, we will do. Okay? And I've said that to the chief and if you need something from me personally, call me. I'm willing to do whatever you need. We're going to take a break so you guys can get out of here. Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
That was, that's awesome. Another feather in the proud cap. Thank you, guys. You did a fantastic job before.
Yes, sir.
That's awesome. Before I cut everybody loose, I'd just like to say this to firefighter Banelle and to every member of this district, we are a family. I know the chief and the other chiefs administration have reached out. If any of you need anything from this board that we can help in any way, all you have to do is ask. If you need to talk to someone, some of you firefighters, you need to talk, ask. I, I know that the administration has talked to you. There's no shame in anything. Anything you need, we will do. Okay? And I've said that to the chief and if you need something from me personally, call me. I'm willing to do whatever you need. We're going to take a break so you guys can get out of here. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That was, that's awesome. Another feather in the proud cap. Thank you, guys. You did a fantastic job before.
Yes, sir.
That's awesome. Before I cut everybody loose, I'd just like to say this to firefighter Banelle and to every member of this district, we are a family. I know the chief and the other chiefs administration have reached out. If any of you need anything from this board that we can help in any way, all you have to do is ask. If you need to talk to someone, some of you firefighters, you need to talk, ask. I, I know that the administration has talked to you. There's no shame in anything. Anything you need, we will do. Okay? And I've said that to the chief and if you need something from me personally, call me. I'm willing to do whatever you need. We're going to take a break so you guys can get out of here. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That was, that's awesome. Another feather in the proud cap. Thank you, guys. You did a fantastic job before.
Yes, sir.
That's awesome. Before I cut everybody loose, I'd just like to say this to firefighter Banelle and to every member of this district, we are a family. I know the chief and the other chiefs administration have reached out. If any of you need anything from this board that we can help in any way, all you have to do is ask. If you need to talk to someone, some of you firefighters, you need to talk, ask. I, I know that the administration has talked to you. There's no shame in anything. Anything you need, we will do. Okay?
And I've said that to the chief and if you need something from me personally, call me. I'm willing to do whatever you need. We're going to take a break so you guys can get out of here. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That was, that's awesome. Another feather in the proud cap. Thank you, guys. You did a fantastic job before.
Yes, sir.
That's awesome. Before I cut everybody loose, I'd just like to say this to firefighter Banelle and to every member of this district, we are a family. I know the chief and the other chiefs administration have reached out. If any of you need anything from this board that we can help in any way, all you have to do is ask. If you need to talk to someone, some of you firefighters, you need to talk, ask. I, I know that the administration has talked to you. There's no shame in anything. Anything you need, we will do. Okay? And I've said that to the chief and if you need something from me personally, call me. I'm willing to do whatever you need. We're going to take a break so you guys can get out of here. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That was, that's awesome. Another feather in the proud cap. Thank you, guys. You did a fantastic job before.
Yes, sir.
That's awesome. Before I cut everybody loose, I'd just like to say this to firefighter Banelle and to every member of this district, we are a family. I know the chief and the other chiefs administration have reached out. If any of you need anything from this board that we can help in any way, all you have to do is ask. If you need to talk to someone, some of you firefighters, you need to talk, ask. I, I know that the administration has talked to you. There's no shame in anything. Anything you need, we will do. Okay? And I've said that to the chief and if you need something from me personally, call me. I'm willing to do whatever you need. We're going to take a break so you guys can get out of here. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That was, that's awesome. Another feather in the proud cap. Thank you, guys. You did a fantastic job before.
Yes, sir.
That's awesome. Before I cut everybody loose, I'd just like to say this to firefighter Banelle and to every member of this district, we are a family. I know the chief and the other chiefs administration have reached out. If any of you need anything from this board that we can help in any way, all you have to do is ask. If you need to talk to someone, some of you firefighters, you need to talk, ask. I, I know that the administration has talked to you. There's no shame in anything. Anything you need, we will do. Okay? And I've said that to the chief and if you need something from me personally, call me. I'm willing to do whatever you need. We're going to take a break so you guys can get out of here. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That was, that's awesome. Another feather in the proud cap. Thank you, guys. You did a fantastic job before.
Yes, sir.
That's awesome. Before I cut everybody loose, I'd just like to say this to firefighter Banelle and to every member of this district, we are a family. I know the chief and the other chiefs administration have reached out. If any of you need anything from this board that we can help in any way, all you have to do is ask. If you need to talk to someone, some of you firefighters, you need to talk, ask. I, I know that the administration has talked to you. There's no shame in anything. Anything you need, we will do. Okay? And I've said that to the chief and if you need something from me personally, call me. I'm willing to do whatever you need. We're going to take a break so you guys can get out of here. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That was, that's awesome. Another feather in the proud cap. Thank you, guys. You did a fantastic job before.
Yes, sir.
That's awesome. Before I cut everybody loose, I'd just like to say this to firefighter Banelle and to every member of this district, we are a family. I know the chief and the other chiefs administration have reached out.